All right, this is a public hearing. I'm going to read the disclosure statement. This is on a street vacation request. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city's staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or the land use board of appeals, or to seek damages and circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission or the city council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence and testimony. All right, does any counselor need to declare a conflict of interest, or ex parte contact, or personal bias?
No. No, but I do need to mention that I went in our view space from those that probably adjacent to this. On the property.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to challenge the council's ability, or someone on the council's ability? Counsel's ability to make an impartial decision? Seeing no hands, no indication. We'll go to Garrett Phillips, and we'll have the staff report.
Good evening. So this is a street vacation request that was submitted originally back in late 2024. There was a variety of application materials that had to be put together by the applicant over the last several months, and they completed their application in late June, and we had a planning commission discussion on the street vacation request in the beginning of August. And now it's city council's turn to consider the request and make a decision on it. So the request is to vacate a length of right-of-way that's about 400 feet long and 30 feet wide. It extends south from Pacific Way. You could call it maybe half a block west of US 101. So the right-of-way was named on original city plats as Hemlock. And now it doesn't show up as having a name when you look at Google Maps or other contemporary maps. And it extends south from Pacific Way in that area between US 101 and Glen. The staff report that we prepared lays out basic findings that support the vacation, at least meeting for minimum approval requirements that are established by our zoning ordinance. But the city council has discretion to decide whether or not the vacation is in the best interests of the city. So just because it meets those requirements, it doesn't mean that you have to approve it if you don't want to. And the staff report findings that the application meets the requirements is based on some recommended conditions of approval that staff established and that planning commission recommended as well. So just to review planning commission's discussion in August, there was no public testimony at the meeting. And planning commission basically felt like this is okay if city council wants to go ahead with it. They didn't have objections. They did have a couple of conditions of approval that they recommended, and I'll review all the recommended conditions in a moment. Since the planning commission hearing, we've had one piece of testimony submitted in writing that wasn't for and was not against, but just raised a concern about whether vacating the right-of-way diminishes the city's ability to protect wetlands that are on the site within the right-of-way, and diminishes the city's ability to protect the floodplain functions of the right-of-way, because there's also floodplain in the vicinity, although not in the actual area that the city is being requested to vacate. Some other basic information about the right-of-way area aside from the location that I shared with you before. It does include locally significant wetland that's established in our 2011 local wetlands inventory. So if the city vacates the right-of-way, the wetland will still be regulated by the city's zoning ordinance. Development within the wetland would be prohibited. Removing vegetation, grading, filling, all of that would be prohibited. There's no significant development within the right-of-way area. There is a portion of a building at the northern extent of the right-of-way that appears to be overhanging into it. And there's also a overhead power line that crosses it to serve a single property. And there's a gas line that also appears to be just serving a single property that runs through it. So not serving additional properties, and the property being served is a beach development, Terry Lowenberg, the applicant's property. Okay, so moving into the decision criteria and considerations. Our zoning ordinance, Article 12, basically provides the guidance on how to decide on right-of-way vacations. And some of the main pieces are that all of the owners immediately adjacent to the right-of-way need to submit consent forms, and they have done that. Additionally, two-thirds, owners representing two-thirds of the area extending 400 feet to the north and south of the vacation area need to submit consent forms, and they have done that also. Moving past the application fee and hearing notices, the planning commission recommendation. The Article 12 establishes assessment compensation requirements, and it basically provides a conceptually pretty simple formula that doesn't take into account much in the way of local conditions. It simply, the formula simply requires that we calculate the value of the right-of-way and the compensation that's due the city based on the value of the adjacent lots that the right-of-way would attach to. So we take the county assessor's 2024 land value, not improvement value, for the adjacent lots, and divide that by the square foot footage of those lots to determine an average price per square foot for the adjacent lots. And then assign that average price per square foot to portions of the right-of-way adjacent to them. So you would see in Section 12.030 of the staff report, our estimated compensation is assigned to each lot that's adjacent to the vacation area. And the city would be agnostic about who pays that, but it would need to be paid by somebody or all of the owners adjacent. And there's been some discussion and back and forth about the compensation requirement. Because historically, there was a city decision that adjusted the compensation amount based on some local factors. And our zoning ordinance. So I originally thought when we went to planning commission that this was set in stone, and then we saw some prior decision-making that considered local factors, and then I've gone back to the zoning ordinance, and it really does appear that this is supposed to be the amount that the city gets compensated. And that feels, I think, to many reasonable people like it's detached from reality in that much of the vacation area is unusable wetland. So like a reasonable person would think, oh, it shouldn't be valued the same as the same price per square foot as adjacent land that's fronting on US 101, for example, and that is not wetland. But Section 12.030, as I read it, seems to require this compensation amount, and that might be a source of of impasse for the applicant or for city council, but we'll see how the discussion goes. Moving on in the staff report, the vacated area, essentially, if you approve it, it gets divided to each side. 50% to each side, so it'd be 15 feet to the east and 15 feet to the west. It doesn't create new lots. It just increases the size of the existing adjacent lots. 12.050 establishes some considerations. And it asked the applicant to describe the reason for the request. The planning commission suggested that city council ask more about why the applicant wants the right-of-way area, just to be clear about that. And then these other criteria ask the city to consider whether the right-of-way area is going to be needed for anything that right-of-ways are typically needed for in the future, whether it's access to other lots or public infrastructure, public access to a waterway, and things of that nature. And the right-of-way area does not serve any of those purposes. It's not identified in our transportation system plan. It's not providing access to Goal 17 wetlands or shorelands. So in that regard, it would be okay to vacate the right-of-way. Really, the only purpose that this 400-foot section of right-of-way serves is like a hypothetical one in that the city would continue to own right-of-way sections to the south that have no other legal access point for the city. So if something were ever to happen on that land that the city were liable for in that right-of-way area further south, this would be the only way to access it to correct the issue. And I have no idea what that can be. It'd be very hypothetical. And so one of the recommended conditions of approval would be to retain an access easement or to have one provided through a different property from the applicant. So just moving on, Section 12.060, this gets into some of the procedures of how the right-of-way vacation would get recorded and how some of the next steps would unfold. I would say that this is a fairly preliminary proposal, considering that we're having a hearing on it. There's some questions about whether the applicant would even want to go forward with it, given compensation. Questions about, our understanding is that perhaps the applicant would want to be purchasing the western 15 feet from the owners that would receive that half. But in any case, this hearing is for you all to consider the merits of the proposal, whether it's in the city's interests. And if you approved it with the recommended conditions, we would have some more work to do with the applicant to have a final survey completed and a legal description written with a surveyor's stamp, and then have compensation provided and having it all recorded with class of county. Recommended conditions of approval, I mentioned a private access easement. And then Conditions 2 through 5 are really just, they're almost like reminders of the procedures and steps that would need to be completed prior to actually finalizing this. And then number six is recommended by staff that if the city council were to approve the ordinance, that we should have a timeline on it, and that approval shouldn't sit around for 10 years, for example. So in any case, it's a timeline on completing these steps and getting the vacation done. I'm going to conclude my report with that, and I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay, we will go to the applicant's report. You're just going to go on your application, Terry?
No, I've got some things I'd like to say.
Okay.
So you all had a rest on that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Terry Lowenberg, Beach Development, 92511, that was his site. I fail to see what the city would need access to this walk for that's governed by other blocks specific to the city. So there cannot be any building on or getting kind anywhere, and there's lots of wetlands that aren't accessible by the city for what I would have the idea of being accessible for. I don't see as a city having used whatsoever for the wetlands. I would like to have that just to clean up the property line for one, but the building on the south end is on the vital. So it's just a shed that could be torn down. I also find that $75,000 for that piece of ground that is totally unusable, totally, totally unbuildable for any reason by anybody is absolutely if you grant the right-of-way, you do put, I mean, if you grant it. It puts that land on the tax walls, which isn't right down. So also, there was one other issue that I heard him say, but I can't recall. Anyway, I guess I hope there are any questions.
Can you describe what clean up the property line means?
Well, it's it's, the property line is defined, and it has been. That fellow there said it need to be surveyed and everything done. We did that, and we submitted it. I assume you have it. We paid for a survey to have it all marked out so that it could be seen. And some of the overhang foliage, basically, needs to be trimmed. I don't want to do a wave on it, I just want to trim it. Is that answering your question?
Trimmy foliage, that's it.
So Terry, you said the building to the south encroaches on the property line. Are you referring to the the garbage shed on the north?
No, on the south.
On the south? So that would be the one right beside Coomer's? Or the second one end from 3350 to 3348? I don't understand how you get south when there's nothing on this but wetlands.
You don't picture it?
Yeah. This is north, this is south, and
There's a shed right in here.
So this is, what year was the shed put in?
Oh, probably in the 50s.
Okay.
All right. So there is a shed there, that it's not visible?
Yes. Actually, it's
Kind of fence it again.
It's right back in the building, it's right here.
Okay.
And if you notice, the east line goes right by the corner of the building. And there presently is capability to enter this side of the building, which without that, there is no access to that side of the building, if you technically want to say that, because technically, that's your
Right, okay, but don't you have a garbage shed here?
That's correct, and that is totally
In the right-of-way, there is?
Yeah, both of those are just for years.
Okay, thank you for that. Say, Garrett. Garrett, under 12.04 or 12.05, under Number 1, the last sentence says, "Staff do not understand the applicant's reasoning, reason for vacating right-of-way south of that area most adjacent to Pacific Way." What does that mean to me?
That is just responding to this 12.050 consideration from the code that asks the applicant, what is the reason to vacate this particular area? And it's just that in the application materials, it wasn't clear why the whole right-of-way extending 400 feet south of Pacific Way was desired. And that's okay, but only because the GZO, the zoning ordinance, asked for a comment on that, we noted that we didn't understand it at the time. I think you provided with some good clarification.
Okay. All right. Are there
Also, the the corner of the building, which should be on the northwest corner, most by the property line. We would, that would be some advantage to us for access to the building. I guess we can grant on the city properties now to access the building, but it would make it much, much better if you have this thing hanging between the city and us, regardless of whose favor it exists. And values, I read through a bunch of that stuff about the values. The value of the land is pretty much predicated on the land around it, which is what the fellow said. However, it does not predicated on swamp. It's predicated on a land, usable land that is swamp. So I got huge, huge, well, with price. Like I said, we'll put it back on the tax bills for one still.
Okay. All right, moving on, do you have anything else? Okay, are there any proponents that wish to speak at this time? Are there any opponents that wish to speak at this time? Are there any neutral comments that want to speak at this time?
I have a question.
Oh, the applicant?
Correct.
Yeah, we, go ahead.
So where'd you come up with the $75,000?
$37,500 for each half.
So the findings in here were total was $60,570.
$37,500 for half. So I got it's two.
I agree with you about the swamp. And according to your survey, northwest corner of the old Quogue Gardens building is hanging over the line.
It's, I'm not positive it's hanging over the line, it's on the line, it's supposed to be mine.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right. So we're not going to have an applicant's rebuttal since we've had no challenges, no neutrals or anything like that. We're going to move to close the hearing. All right, hearing's closed. Yes, we do, when it comes up under new business. All right, is there any conflict of interest?
No.
No.
Okay. City council meeting for September 3, 2025, City of Gerhard is called orders. I'll have the work session minutes, any corrections?
We should have proof.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, thank you. All right, regular city council meeting for Wednesday, August 6, 2025, minutes, please?
Need to approve. Second.
Any discussions?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Everyone's got a copy of the planning commission minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I have an issue with them, and it's just minor, but I would like Virginia to be able to sign these, since she's president of the council along with Angelina, if that's how it's going to work. So she's gone through it also, and it concurs with Angelina. Can we do that, please? Okay, great. Moving on. So mayor's report. I went to the Trails and Art Association and awarded the mayor's award to anyway, it's in their showroom, it's the one with the bench at Little Beach. It's very serene, it is something that I found out later. The family that lost their 12-year-old son who bought the bench and had it commemorated to him. They lost him to cancer. Have been able to buy it, all they're asking Kay to do is to paint a little plaque on the back. Not that it has to be legible, just so when they have it, they will always, and they still do, remember him. Okay, so moving on, I went to the Gerhard Association picnic meeting, or whatever you want to call that, shindig on Sunday. Both presidents have resigned. I've had multiple meetings with Chad and Paulina, and Chad. I attended a three-day conference in Baker's I attended a three-day conference in Baker City with the Oregon Mayor's Association. And I have met with the um, building official, Chief Como, Chad, and discussed options regarding the building next door. And that's my report. Sharon, your report.
Uh, well, this is not exactly city business, but I participated in a three-hour cleanup of the airport format, working to rid off the weeds from the cracks. Um, I also worked the Hood Coast as a ham radio operator, they had us at certain points along the route. Uh, in case of an emergency where our cell phones don't work. Um, I was there for four hours, uh, and fortunately, nothing happened, we had no incidents. Uh, I have spoken with multiple citizens regarding the public safety building because I'm starting to ask everybody what they think. Uh, and then lastly, an update on the Second Street property. Uh, we are very close to completing the purchase of that. The North Coast Land Conservancy has stepped in and is taking uh, all the donations that we've been able to garner, uh, and buying the property from the landowner, landowner. That deal should be completed within the next two to three weeks. Uh, they are intending to turn that property over to the city. Uh, probably sometime around the beginning of next year. Um, but uh, with stipulations, uh, probably one of which will be that nothing will be taken away from the property, including the trees, uh, and probably that nothing will be built on the property. So we uh, are very close to having enough funds to pay the landowner. Um, we could definitely use a few more donations if anybody's so inclined. Uh, all you have to do is call the land conservancy and tell them your donations for the Second Street property, it is tax deductible. That's it.
Paulina?
Let me just piggyback on, you can also just go to the uh, North Coast Land Conservancy and do a donation online if you don't want to pick up the phone and call. And um, as far as my report, uh, this month, uh, uh, well, Chad and I have stepped up our meetings to weekly, uh, and it's really, we have spent our time uh, uh, writing an action plan, uh, many steps that all the counselors will be taking to try and pull together uh, options for the city on uh, public safety, uh, building structure, remodel, new building, whatever it turns out to be. That's really it, folks, my time. I do have a counselor, Paulina Cochran, uh, Facebook and Instagram going now, so I have been starting to comment and I've done a couple of posts, so that's all I have.
Dana?
Um, so it was a slightly slower month for me, I did also walk around the trails and art competition, but I didn't judge anything, but I appreciated um, that and the music in the park, and also I have nice Ziggy's, which I highly recommend. Um, Meyer Freeman, um, from the Small Business Development Center and I uh, walked around to some of the new smaller businesses around town and handed out flyers and you know, I introduced him so that they would know that that there were some resources for them to help them, uh, should they be interested, we put some flyers indoors when folks weren't there. Um, I reviewed the task spreadsheet that um, Paulina worked so hard on and I want to thank you for your hard work on that, I appreciate it. Uh, I worked on the proposal for the contractor work hours that we're going to discuss later today. Uh, I signed up to attend the FEMA Zoom conference update about the buy-up on next Tuesday. And so I want to remind you all, you should have, I, I received an email, if you didn't receive an email and you would like a copy, let me know and I'll forward it to you. And that's it.
Preston?
Uh, I've been around town talking to the citizen, you know, about the public service. I've had, I've had a lot of discussions with different people, so. Somebody.
Thanks a lot. Alright, moving on. Greg, Greg in the floor?
Good day, Greg. Uh, not a lot before, uh, officers did a great job in my absence while I was on vacation. Uh, stats are in. Um, as you see, we've had the thirteen citations, forty-seven warnings. Um, we did make a, an arrest on a theft case, we've been working for a while. Uh, then Riff Brez did a great job on, uh, still some pending stuff on that as well, so I can't really go into detail too much, but kudos to him. And that's what I got tonight, not a whole lot.
Great, glad to hear it's short.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, these traffic citations, do you have a sense of where those are primarily in the city?
Yes, so a lot of them are in the areas that we frequently run traffic. Uh, so one of those would be um, Highway one oh one, where it becomes forty, going uh, south towards Seaside for a specific way. Uh, a lot of stops are made there, people fail to drop that five mile an hour, but they're already doing fifty, fifty-five as it is. And so they hit that forty mile an hour, they're getting to the core of that uh, business district, and so we'll stop them there. Um, another one is by BUDS, uh, we like to sit alongside of BUDS and run rear radar and whatever vehicles coming through there, still doing fifty-five. Typically, they'll be doing sixty, uh, when it's in a forty-five zone. Uh, another one that honestly, we could work all day long is, is uh, in the area of Cottage and Gerhardt Lane. I know you've probably everyone has seen a cop car at least sitting at that little pulled out by the golf course. Um, again, we could run traffic there all day long. Uh, there's people, twenty-five is slow, but necessary, I believe, through that area. And so people fail to see the three twenty-five mile an hour signs that are going that direction for some reason. Uh, and they're like, I didn't see the sign, I didn't know, so uh, those are, those are some hot spots. I have sat out here and ran radar many times. Um, I have found that they just, it's so easy to see the cop car sitting that they slow down, that's fine, we should get into their own day. Uh, but it does deter some speed through there. Uh, if we're sitting parallel to the road, they'll see us. Uh, yeah, those are the, those are the real hotspots, of course.
Okay, and rear radar means you get them after them, by the way?
So we have a front-facing and a rear-facing, uh, when I first started, I remember we did the uh, I did the proposal for the updating the police vehicles. We used to only have a front-facing radar, that's very tricky, especially when you have, when you have traffic coming at you, you need to basically pull around and come back into traffic stakers. So having a rear radar is shooting behind me, I can see the speed of vehicles approaching me from behind me.
I see. That's it.
Any other questions?
Yes. Um, I noticed that in your report that you all found a camp, um, South Coastal Restoration and that you found a gentleman sleeping in his car on G Street. Um, and I guess my question, I don't know if I should ask it now or, or later, but it was related to the, the request to vacate the property down there, whether access is, is important or not. Down in that area, are you still continuing, because I know it's on the migration pattern for some of the, the transit folks that go up and down the coast certain times a year, is that a problem? Do you see a need to have access down there?
And we're still speaking about back here?
Yeah, we're talking about the area between um, where the RVs are parked and the properties that, that border the one oh one.
Right, there have been camps through there, uh, we, if that was cleaned up, it would make it a little bit easier, the foliage was cut back to see into it. Um, right now, I, we've checked that recently, actually, there was no camps in it, there were no camps. Um, did find another camp, just about ten minutes before I got in here, I was on a call, not in that area, so they're, they're moving around. It's really hard to pinpoint, they know that when they see or know that we're coming out there, they just move and go to the next spot.
Well, that's, that's my concern, if we give them a protected area that it's hard for us to get to them at, is there, are they more likely to create a spot there and could there be fires and some other things that?
There could be, and to be up to the property owner to really pay attention to that.
Well, then we would be the property owner, but it'd be like in the center of a donut, um, how we can get to it is my question.
Yeah, hopefully through the highway one oh one through the, through the uh, property to go back and to assist the property owner.
As long as there's still access.
Yeah.
You're not, well, that.
And I feel better answered too, if I had a chance to look at it.
You said by coastal restoration?
Yeah, there's a trail.
I, that was just an example of one of the camps that they found, the camps pop up in places that are not
I think that's what confused me.
Checked on, and if, if you take a place and you isolate it, the likelihood of you ending up at the camp there increases if they are not able to get back and check it, so that's what I'm asking, is there a way for you to get back there, check it, and if there were to be fires, is there a way for you to get back there and respond to it?
It, it, if it was stayed the same way, there would be no difference in our access points, we would, we would access the exact same way that we would. And you know, if we have a call for service or if there's something like a, any type of situation happens, Mr. Wilber would not want them on his property as well, so. Uh, we, we would.
No, well, no, I, I get benefit of that because it's a lot easier to protect the, the portion that we become private property would be a lot easier for you to protect than the part that's the public property. I just want to make sure that we are still able to get to our public property.
It cleaned up well.
Yeah, and there have been quite a few back in there uh, in the past, um, but like I said, Sergeant Brown and myself have actually gone up there multiple times. Um, over the period, well, since I've been here. And we'll check and make sure that there's no one back there, and we haven't seen any remnants of camps in a while back there. Doesn't mean it won't happen again, like you said, it is a migrating path for them. And that right of way, as it continues south, there's other spots as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want more questions, sorry, the longer you're here, the more I think of. Uh, is it helpful to you and the other officers uh, to have the speed sign, electric speed sign working, or does that make a difference to you guys or?
I, I, I mean, it's beneficial, it is beneficial because it's going to remind the driver uh, that there is a speed limit and it, not just a white sign with black lettering, it's, it's flashing, it's catching attention.
Yeah.
Uh, so I mean, it's always going to be beneficial, most definitely, I think that one's kind of dated, it wouldn't be bad to get a uh, more up-to-date. That is one of your best, that one you want to stand there waiting for it to leave again. Gotcha, so it's going to look a lot better.
But it doesn't have a count, does it?
No. It doesn't have, it doesn't do anything for you.
Alright. So, moving on. Chief Como?
Thank you, sir. Um, you guys all have last month's stats in front of you, uh, we have a total of sixty-nine calls for August. Forty-four in city limits and one in the districts. Um, how that compares to uh, last year, um, we had sixty-two calls for August of last year. Uh, to date, uh, at the end of August, we're a hundred and twelve incidents ahead in that overall. Um, and then the only thing I have to kind of uh, update extra from last month was uh, we participated pretty heavily in Hood Coast. Um, because of the challenges that creates and, and getting out of that part of our district and stuff up there. Um, because we're up there, uh, it's kind of the Fourth of July, our presence does a lot of mitigating on the port. Up there this year, we handed out like five cases of water for runners, um, they follow behind lots of runners, their skin was changing colors and things and stuff. Um, assisting with that, um, we even filled in with, they were short flaggers and so a lot of our guys was using the traffic. Um, so uh, because of that, our presence up there, um, it went very smooth. It had a few calls up there and during the event, we had some calls, um, in our district and in town. Um, because we put people on shift up there, wherever the people here, um, and we know that it was just like a mobilization, was followed per listen for me, so. Um, with that, it went pretty well and it was smooth and we're able to handle everything, if not, it would have kind of been tough to manage those places. Other than that, that's what I have for you, I don't see any question.
Any questions for the chief?
Uh, yeah, you gotta, did you send the people or did you send the trucks to them first?
Um, both, well, um, the OSF and Pender that we co-owned went, and so because in OSF, they have rights, we get half the rate, some said eighty dollars an hour, it's forty. So we sent that and two firefighters to sisters.
Are they still there?
No, they came back um, Saturday. They were gone eight days total.
Are you working on uh, posting or working on uh, revising the job description?
So I posted interim position in-house, if there's any in-house people um, that want to apply for an interim up to twelve months position while giving me time to work um, out finding a permanent, long-term person for that. Um, that's just an in-house description so far, it has not gone even to the accounting yet.
Train officer though?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you gotten a sponsor?
Not yet, not yet, it's a pretty specific unit, it has, it's a tough position to fill.
Any other questions for the chief?
I see that uh, I see that you had two medical calls at uh, fourteen seventeen Pfeiffer Heights Road.
Yeah.
That you've got this at Seaside.
So thanks for, I've been waiting for one of you guys to bring that up. Because we share the same zip code at Seaside, it's very random and sporadic, let the system auto-generates. On Pfeiffer, the half of them say Seaside and half will say Gerhardt, that's the same with addresses on I don't know, one. Um, I think there's even a couple in the reserve that are that way. Um, all over, and, and it, it creates lots of issues within our system, because as soon as dispatch types in the address, it auto-populates the, the zip code and the city and everything from there, and so that's the result of that.
There's, there's a reason why Seaside has streets and Gerhardt has roads.
Yeah, I wonder, when you guys ask that question for, for that, yeah, that's exactly.
I mean, you know, I mean, all these people are complaining about the zip code.
Yeah.
You know, all the drivers have to remember is it Gerhardt?
Yeah.
You know, Seaside has the end of whatever the, the street name is, you've got, you've got designation for that.
Not only does it create shipping issues, but all of our calls, we get, I'm sent responses and stuff, a lot of times um, it messes with that, and then it, it changes our reporting in our system from that a lot. Yes, sir. Anything else? Thank you, thank you, sir.
Master of Money?
Uh, so we completed our annual site visit with the auditors, they were here for the day. Uh, and they're now preparing our final audit, which will be to us by um, December thirty-first, I'm sure they'll have it to us earlier, she said that the draft was already in the works, so we should be getting a draft soon. It went very well, they had no issues and had some uh, recommendations, just for some general questions that we had asked them, so it was, it was a nice visit. Uh, in finance news, noteworthy in revenue, the city received our quarterly franchise fee from, from Spectrum uh, charter communication, which is down nine point two percent uh, in comparison to last year. Uh, there was also a reimbursement check for expenditures on the Albers Springs fire um, conflict, which is in ten zero zero six five. The building department also gained some momentum in August. Um, it, it was really surprising, but we've seen several new homes that have been permitted, uh, which increased the revenue in Fund Forty. So we're starting to see some money in there, which is uh, offset pretty quickly because our building official gets seventy-five percent of that, so. Uh, it's, we need that revenue coming in. A state revenue share apportionment was received in forty-five zero zero one eight. And as we expected, it's down six percent from last year, so it isn't going to increase since that's based on our population, and they have designated our population lower this year. So we will see a decrease in all of our um, state revenue sources. Uh, there was also a revenue line added in the Fire Apparatus Reserve Fund, so in seventy-four zero zero two oh, we added miscellaneous uh, for the sale of a surplus vehicle to the Seaside Fire and Rescue. So we uh, purchased those vehicles out of that fund uh, for our new um, staff vehicles. And we put the money back into that fund uh, when we sold one of them. And we're going to for the other one that we sell too. In expenditures, the police department had an annual renewal for access to the Lexipol services, which was in ten twelve sixty-three. In debt service, which is twenty twenty-one four, as part of the regular payment schedule, the city had a In debt service, which is twenty twenty-one four, as part of the regular payment schedule, the shi- city had an inter- interest payment. Due on our remaining uh, water stream facility, general obligation bonds. And that, then we have a payment uh, and an interest payment in bank. So that's part of our regular schedule that we do every year. But we only have the one uh, bond that. In water, uh, account thirty thirty-sixty-four, water purchase. Uh, the city did have a four percent increase rate in warranties rates this year. Um, however, we did purchase significantly less water this July. Um, compared to last year. So it was less on a, as a line item, but we paid more for the water that we purchased. In Fund Fifty, Road District, there was a purchase service for street, we strike, I think. We had um, a local company, restripped some of our lines for us. Uh, and then our public works had purchased uh, gen- in general uh, maintenance in Fund Fifty. Uh, sidewalk torch down, which is kind of a, a thick um, piece of white that goes down on the sidewalks. That they use hot heat to adhere to the street. So they're working on that. They ran out. Uh, but I believe that they're ordering more and hopefully we'll finish up the rest of the sidewalks that didn't get done. Uh, in banking news, uh, the city was notified in August that Anqua Bank has renamed itself Columbia Bank. So it was Columbia, Bank of Astoria, Columbia Bank, Anqua. Now it's going back to Anqua. Uh. Columbia, yes, sorry. And although those customers will avoid any changes in their account, uh, the city is not going to be so lucky. So we do have to um, change our account number. Columbia has assigned a new account number to us. And we'll be closing the city's old account. I know it doesn't sound difficult, but we make hundreds of transactions electronically. And although it's just paperwork, it's going to be a short timeline. We have to do it by August. And you know, we'll, we'll get them done. Our biggest concern is our direct deposit for some of our larger CIS. Um, ones that just take a little bit more formality to change. It's not a matter of us just logging in, changing account information. We have to do it with our um, formal paperwork for those types of things. But we'll get it done. We have expenditures that we need. We'll be ready when it officially closes October twenty-seventh.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Justin. All right, City Attorney.
Good evening.
Chad Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chad Jacobs from your interim City Attorney's Office. Um, uh, just a short report. Our attorneys in our office have been working diligently. I'm sorry, my dog decided to come in and play at the last, as soon as I come on camera, he'll take that toy away. Um, our attorneys have been working diligently with uh, staff. So your staff's getting an opportunity to meet the various attorneys in our office, which is nice. Uh, we're working on various projects with city and, and your city staff has been great to work with. So uh, just all positive reports on our end. I did want to give you all one update. Uh, as I think you've discussed previously. Uh, we were asked to try to acquire the files from Peter's office and we've been working with the attorney who is uh, working to close down Peter's office. And with uh, the PLF, which is the Pro- Professional Liability Fund. It's the sort of insurance carrier for all attorneys in Oregon, trying to acquire those files. We've been able to acquire a handful of paper files, nothing really of substance. They're having lots of difficulties getting any access to any of Peter's electronic files. They're going to keep working on that and will notify us if they can get access to them. But right now it's looking like we're really going to have minimal access to any of his old files. So we'll keep you updated if we get anything else, but right now we're, we're sort of uh, running short on being able to get any sort of uh, historical information for the city. Um, hopefully that won't create much of a problem. I think staff has, has kept pretty good files on most of the things that Peter's been, that Peter worked on with you all. Um, and we can certainly try to recreate anything that we need to recreate. Uh, but as far as, you know, actually getting access to the files, we're coming up a little short. So I just want to give you an update on that. If we get anywhere information from PLF or the attorney who's closing out Peter's office, we'll be sure to let you know.
All right, thank you.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Um, so Peter was working somewhat hard and consistently on Portland State's numbers for us. Which resulted in the decrease of our state revenue sharing. And I know that um, since he's not here, I don't know what's happening with that. But I know the League of Oregon Cities was also, had heard from many cities that were unhappy with the, the the philosophy that Portland State was using, I guess if you want to call it, the, the methodology. And uh, there are some other folks throughout the state that are willing to, to fight it. So I'm wondering, um, I just want to make sure between you and Chad that that doesn't, that doesn't get dropped. That we contact whoever we need to contact at League of Oregon Cities. And, and if Peter can't be our champion anymore, then we say, hey, we'll throw men with whoever we need to throw in in order to protect our money. Because their methodology is off.
Certainly, I'm, I'm happy to work with Chad and uh, folks in our office work with Chad. We, we have a very close relationship with the folks at LSC. So I'm, I'm happy to reach out to them. Um, if Chad.
I appreciate it.
Always up contacts.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
Anyone else with a question for Chad? No one? Okay, thank you, Chad. All right, moving on. Chad.
I do. Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, Council updated a few of the things that I was going to talk about with public safety building and that. Uh, and thank you very much all for your time and spending of being on that uh, issue. Um, of note, um, code enforcement wise has been quite busy, uh, dealing with a lot of different things, vegetation. Uh, tree situation, we're currently working on, uh, I think I've got four open tree permits that we're working through. And it's cleared two so far in the last two weeks. Uh, so that's been keeping us busy. We have a short-term vacation rental permit that expired uh, due to lack of action. And that person is actually appealing my decision to uh, the planning commission. And so this is our first appeal uh, that's gone this way. So we're, we're busy putting that together and we'll be discussing that with planning commission in October. Uh, I believe. Um, we. Garrett had put on uh, the back of my city administrator report, received email updating uh, on the FEMA pick-up and the options. Uh, during the last meeting, uh, Council Sharon was curious on moving forward with. Uh, how to, how to move forward with potentially uh, adopting the pick-up measures as they've been written. Uh, Garrett and I had had a meeting about that and uh, we are going to be looking at bringing that back uh, during the October meeting. Uh, so I just wanted to update you on that, Sharon, that we're moving forward. We saw a few things that we need to take care of and some things we need to clarify, but that should be coming soon. Uh, and then on Sunday, as I was traveling back from a family event, I received an email from a constituent or excuse me, a resident. About signs that were installed in the A-two aquatic zone, freshwater wetland zone. Uh, east, excuse me, south of G Street. Um, Tuesday, yesterday, I made it out to that area, found those signs. Identified the property owner and we will be contacting them very soon tomorrow. As a matter of fact, we've got all their contact information now. And having those removed. Those signs are not legal. Uh, they were not permitted. Even on Facebook, it said that uh, they were permitted by the city. Not sure whether Facebook got that information. But they were not. There was no permitting process that they brought to us or we wouldn't stop that. Um, so we are having them remove those signs. There is a way for those folks to put a trespassing sign on their own property. Just outside that area, they did. So that's probably the resolution that we'll have. I haven't talked to the folks yet to find out whether or not they've got some issues with people that have been walking back and forth. But they did install a trail cam and those signs. So obviously something had piqued their interest and they're trying to remedy that. Um, it's just unfortunate, unfortunately, you can't put signage, fencing or any other structures in the freshwater wetland zone or the A-two aquatic zone. So we'll make sure that that gets remedied and work with those folks.
That's, that's in the same area that we were talking about earlier where the, there's the migration pattern, right?
Potentially. This is uh, west of the migration uh, area, if you will. And I'm not aware of any trails that are back there, but there are vacation rentals that are on our houses that are not occupied that often. So I can understand why these people would be concerned. Um, but uh, I've been in contact, uh, with the police department and we are, you know, monitoring this situation. And I'll get more information from them owners uh, so that maybe, uh, so I get a better understanding of what they're trying to do. And I'll communicate that to Chief. Um, we did receive one proposal for attorney uh, through our, our IP process. So we're going to go through that proposal uh, and check that out and then I'll report more to you as we learn more. Um, but I've been in contact with uh, Mr. Jacobs from uh, Bury Ellis now and keeping him informed. And uh, they too have been great to work with. So we've done a great job this interim. Uh, at that, that's all. But I have to report a moment.
The, the application that you got that's from the second to putting out of the R P.
Correct.
Where are we at with the gentleman who asked for more mon- uh, money off of his water bill debacle?
Uh, the water mill, we authorized a refund for them. No, we went beyond the forty percent. Uh, that was a decision of the council uh, to allow us to do that. And we went ahead and gave him a larger than forty percent uh, discount on that. And then we are monitoring the situations in this order to make sure that, that everything is solved. And it looks like at this point, the league has resolved.
What percentage?
I think we reduced it more closer to eighty percent because there was still, uh, we charged him for what is normal water usage would have been. We averaged that out and that is what he's paying rather than the amount that was uh, brought in uh, or, or leaking through the system. So yeah, we, we did a more than forty percent discount.
We had no way to go back. Meter was gone. We had no way. That meter had been replaced. And the consumption of that water was probably on the old meter. Well, it was on the old meter. So we had no way of verifying whether or not there was an issue with that meter because it had been pulled out and replaced mid-cycle.
Right, but he didn't, he, I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. Didn't he admit that his son had not shut the valve off?
Well, but it was after the water meter had been changed. But I mean, yeah, the timeline that's not.
It was a series of events that made it very difficult for us to stand on our information because of that meter change down. So we had to make some, some calls with that one, but I was comfortable with making that call on. Um, and we don't make that easy on people. As you see, we bring them into the city council. Uh, and have had to do this maybe three times uh, in the last ten years or so that people have done it. So. But that was the best solution we could come up with, with the proof that we had.
You're watching the new meter and it's functioning great.
Any other questions? Moving on. We have no visitors. Public communication written in oral. We have no late written communication. We have no written communication. Anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest not on the agenda may do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment electronically must be submitted by email to the city recorder at info@cityofgearhart.com. No later than four P M. The day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. I have two people.
Can I sign in? I'm sorry. I was late getting here.
Well, Pat, I'm going to make an exception for you.
I really appreciate it, Mr. May.
Okay, but.
I was late getting here because I had to go get a copy of.
Yeah, thank you. All right. We're gonna go with Deanna Mansell. Signs on the Nea Coxie.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Deanna Mansell, twenty-nine forty-five Highway one on one north of Gearhart. Um, I was uh, one of many people that were very upset about the signs. Um, I am really familiar with that property, be- being a land surveyor's assistant for a number of years. Um, I think Pat's going to submit uh, an old uh, partition plan map. That was done for this particular piece of property. And the original surveyor had determined that he would use the, the upland vegetation. Uh, as the boundary for this piece of property. And the top of the vegetation was uh, the legally established boundary for that property. So the, the wetland property below, which is the A-two and a tidal marsh estuary environment. That property would flood like seventeen times a year. It just gets totally inundated with water. So we felt like it was not appropriate to put signs down there and to keep us from accessing the estuary. And I just want to call your attention to the fact that the entire estuary is privately owned. And my concern was that if this property owner could block off an access that has always been used continuously. You know, for a hundred years, then the other properties in the estuary, we're going to see a bunch of no trespassing signs. And that was my concern to raise this issue. So um, I, I, I did write you guys some correspondence. Which explains the public trust doctrine. And uh, w- we have to respect that because everyone in Gearhart walks around a lot. And we have to have access to the es- estuary and the beaches and every other public place. So that was my concern. So uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deanna, for mentioning it in your email. All right, next up is Nora Taylor.
No, I don't have anything to say. I didn't sign yet.
Well. Does, is that someone else?
That's me, but I didn't, I, I thought I was signing up.
Okay, that's fine.
Present.
All right, we are done with our uh. Chad, you see what happened? I just went right on like a fall.
Uh, petition Roberts, three six six North Ocean Avenue. Um, I have a very short petition that Deanna wrote and it's about the same property and our concerns. And it's really startling when you realize that this land and all the land along the riverways and the ocean, it's all the same. It's the same authority that makes us, our beaches have, you know, public access. So when you start trying to block access along these estuaries, we get nervous, to put it mildly. We really pay attention and we take it seriously. And um, to the people here who are asking the signs to be removed, we're delighted to hear they're going to be. And that um, anyone else wanting to do this, that it be a very public process so that we can have a discussion with these owners. So they realize what the legal implications are, because we will take you to court.
Not being nasty, I'm just saying, if that, that's how strongly we feel about.
Well, thank you.
Not, I'm not trying to pick a bite.
Oh, that's all right. You can pick all you want.
No, I'm just saying that that's how strongly we feel about it.
Sure, no, it uh, you know, we don't move as fast as lightning, but we do move.
Yeah, I know you do. And it's, and the people's names that are on there are always the ones that agitate and give you a bad time, but we're really concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. To ordinances and resolutions. First up is ordinance nine four nine, an ordinance limiting the zoning map for the city of Gearhart by a float. Applying a floating zone to change five thousand square feet of property from R-two medium density residential. five thousand square feet of property from R-two medium density residential to C-one neighborhood commercial. And this is a second reading by title only? Then please, Chad.
All right, so this is the, uh, from last month, second reading, ordinance nine-four-nine. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Gearheart by applying a floating zone to change five thousand square feet of property from R-two medium density residential to C-one neighborhood commercial. And, uh, from the city council standpoint, we would just need a motion in a second.
All right, I did read a motion to approve ordinance number nine-four-nine, reading once by the title only. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Do I can that all officially read once by that moment?
Yes.
No? Uh, second read, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Gearheart by applying a floating zone to change five thousand square feet of property from R-two medium density to C-one neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Could I make one comment on that? Uh, I did appreciate having the planning commission's minutes that did detail out a little bit. Uh, the volunteer or, or year-round things that, uh, she's thinking about doing like fire pit, you know, heater or maybe even some, or, uh, pergola or something like that. Yeah, so that's helpful to see that.
Change.
Okay, is that it? Okay, thank you very much. Ordinance nine-fifty, an ordinance vacating a portion of Hemlock Avenue right-of-way. Would you give us the synopsis?
Will do, Mayor. So now that you have the public hearing, uh, the attached ordinance nine-fifty will vacate a portion of Hemlock Avenue as indicated in the attached documents. City council has the ability to vacate within a right-of-way following proper procedures. And it's done so in the past, actually. Garrett has provided a separate course that is embedded below. Uh, and Garrett, did you have anything else that you would like to report at this point?
Just a reminder that if you chose to approve the ordinance, that's not the end of the process, although it is the end of, of your involvement in it. But the applicant would have to follow a series of steps and ultimately compensate the city and decide that they want to go ahead with the vacation by doing those things. So you can approve it and leave it up to them and staff to carry out the process. Or you can, um, you can decide that you don't want to approve it. Thank you.
All right, Garrett, is it correct in assuming that the total amount on, it's not numbered, but page four, one to, could be page six, sixty thousand five hundred and seventy is the proper compensation and not seventy-five thousand?
That's correct. The figure on page six, um, the total amount is the amount that the city would need to be compensated um, in order for us to, uh, allow the vacation to be recorded with Platte County.
Okay, and then the C? This is a C-three zone, those buildings, right? Or C-two?
C-two.
It's, um, the zoning would, um, the base zones would extend um, into the right-of-way center line. And let me just pull up zoning to verify.
Yeah, it is, I believe both sides of that are C, is.
Yeah. Well, some of it's actually C-three, but essentially you could imagine the, the zoning would just uh, move into the right-of-way, to the center line, um, from where it currently is. So.
To the center line?
To the center line of where the current right-of-way is, yeah.
Okay, so it isn't that we could have a, a building all the way to the edge of the property?
Well, I think that, uh, in the case of, um, the northernmost properties closest to Pacific Way, where there's currently not a local, a locally significant wetland, at least according to current mapping. Vacating the right-of-way would enable, for example, those properties to extend building into the right-of-way. So they could add, like, the, the, the building at the corner of Pacific Way and US one-on-one, you know, they could conceivably add an addition onto the back.
To the middle of the right-of-way. Is that right?
I don't know if C-two zoning has a zero setback in the rear. They would have to follow the base zone setback. And in this case, based on our knowledge of the wetlands' presence, we would require a wetland delineation before issuing building permits to verify that there's not actually wetlands extending further out than our two thousand eleven inventory indicates. I think, I think the wetlands, the wetlands would be a, a real constraint, but, yeah. I can look at the seat back for you.
If we pass this, or, okay, the, um, vacation, we don't have to go through all the findings. We can just tell, indicate to you that in writing up the findings, that were conditions that the planning commission came up with. If we felt okay with that, then you could go ahead and do whatever it was to write up the document.
That's correct. So the, the staff report and the ordinance are set up now so that you're, you would be, if you just adopt the ordinance, you would be approving, the right-of-way vacation with the conditions that are established in the ordinance or, uh, with the conditions that are written into the staff report. You, of course, have the authority to modify those conditions, uh, right now. And, and change things, you know, to your liking. But if you just adopt the ordinance, those conditions will have to be implemented uh, in order for the applicant to ultimately record the right-of-way vacation and take ownership of the right-of-way.
Okay, and this, uh, draft ordinance does not indicate any kind of, uh, compensation to the city that I can see. Am I missing it?
Let me take a look.
No, it's, it's not in the ordinance, but it isn't staffed.
It, but does it, is that something that is going to be included in this?
Yeah, everything on the conditions in the staff report should be, uh, put into place by the ordinance unless you make any changes.
And may I ask him, ask him a couple of questions?
No, what we need is a motion and then we'll go in a second and then we'll go into discussion. And then you can ask all the questions you want. I believe that's how we work this. So if I can get a motion unless someone wants to, um, do something else.
Um, I make a motion to approve ordinance nine-fifty, reading, uh, once by the title only.
Second, you'll second? Okay. Is there any discussion now?
Sure. Uh, Garrett, I have a few questions for you. Um, so I'm looking at, there's no page numbers, which makes it really hard to refer to what I'm looking at. But I'm looking at the map that has the wetland colored in on it.
Yes.
So it says, uh, the second southernmost lot is three-three-four-eight, it says. So if I'm looking at that correctly, if we vacate the street, does that not move the setback lines for further building?
It moves the, the setback lines that are established by the base zone. So for the property three-three-four-eight, it would, uh, to the extent that there's a setback line, uh, like a rear setback, it would move that setback west fifteen feet. Um, however, it would not move the, um, the zoning ordinance's prohibition on building, removing vegetation or developing anything in any way in the wetland. So.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Uh, second, second question is this map where the wetland is colored in, is that exact? Was that based on a delineation or is that just an approximation?
No, it's an approximation based on the citywide two thousand eleven local wetlands inventory. So, um, all cities have to do these and they are planning level assessments. They involve fieldwork, but they typically don't involve entering private property to delineate specific boundaries. So, um, that is where the role of a, of a delineation, a DSL, Department of State Lands Approved Wetland Delineation comes in, um, often at the time of development.
So we're, let me just be clear about this. We're being asked to make a decision about vacating this property when we don't know really what the increase in buildable lands will be if we vacate it. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct. That is correct. And you could know, you could know with more specificity if you required the applicant to complete a wetland delineation before making your decision. Um, and that, that wetland delineation would be valid for a few years. You know, wetlands change. So again, the buildable lands, so to speak, would be different, again, potentially five to ten years from now. But a wetland delineation would be, uh, more accurate information than what you have available here in this map. Yeah.
So Sharon and I did walk that area back there, uh, prior to this meeting, uh, last week. And the blue area for the wetland overlay is greater than what the actual wetlands are. Because there's a pretty, pretty solid line of delineation. Uh, so there's about twenty or fifteen feet of, of space where it is listed as wetland and it may not be. But if there was any type of development there, we would have a wetland delineation done to determine right where that is.
With every, what does it cost? Do you have a wetland delineation done?
Uh, I've seen them cost a few thousand dollars to five thousand dollars depending on the size of the property. Uh, is that pretty accurate? Carrie done a bunch of those.
Well, like, a fair bit more than that.
Is it?
Yeah, but I, I would like to tell you one thing, it's not on here, you're not aware. The seventh building in the picture, that would be the only place that you could add on if you could add. However, that cannot be added on to because that is the second P or and it services, uh, the building to the, the first north. So it, it's not buildable. And the wetlands actually takes it a little bit of a while then, what the picture shows.
Yeah, back on this part here, but there's that fill line. I, I can show you right here, real quick. If I turn on the light arm or bare earth, see. There's your wetland. That is.
This is including here.
Yeah.
Right up to there.
Right up into there. Because I walked out.
So, uh, there is, and you're, you're more than welcome to put stipulations on that as far as if the law changes or anything else changes or your zoning stuff changes. We will adhere to, we don't have a plan of building on it. And I'm going to protect the, uh, future of the stipulation.
Right, and I appreciate that. Thank you. But what I, my point I'm trying to make is we're trying to, there is an expense to Terry and Holberg, I guess it's going to have to pay something also. There's an expense. And Terry is saying that the expense is too much, okay? And we're trying to make a decision about what the value of this is without knowing what the value of it is because we don't know what land's buildable. So it bugs me a little bit to make a decision without full information is all, I guess, my point.
We're ten grand into a week.
Any other discussion?
Um, well, yeah, I, I would like to see us whenever possible to follow up the planning commission's recommendation and no recommending that the city require an easement granting the city access to the remnant right-of-way as a condition of approving the vacation. And again, for some of the reasons that we've discussed here, I, um, I, I think that that should be covered through one way. I don't think that we should ignore that recommendation from the vacation.
And I believe we did cover that, didn't we? Because we're going to follow the recommendations that's going to be written up that way.
So. No. So I, I'm not sure if I have a comment or a question, uh, or I want to amend the motion. I'm not sure yet. Uh, what I wrote down, uh, I did, I do agree with what Dana said about, uh, number six, the, or, the access piece that she was just talking about for the city. But, uh, I put in the number seven. I, I know you can't fill, I just said, no fill, no use, except use as a wetland left in its natural state. No tree cutting. I guess when I hear people say that a wetland is not doing anything or it's not useful or it's not, a, a wetland is useful. It's doing a job for us. I can imagine on that picture that Carrie's got there that there's a lot of drainage probably that comes off the rain, off of Park Avenue there. It probably goes right down into that wetland there. It's huge, huge importance to have that, able to flow that direction. So that's all I put as a recommendation. I'm not sure what's, you know, the best way to do this at this point. There is the three other, three other recommendations that were in there that speak to some of Tom's concerns, which I was also trying to speak to, which is to require a, a wetland delineation to establish boundaries, require the easement that we talked about, um, or wetland buffer, or reduce the size of the vacation to admit the wetlands, which if we did look at just doing three-three-five-oh, that gets you pretty much out of the wetlands piece, pretty much. Well, fully. Uh, and I don't know if that would be something, it would certainly cost less to just protect that one piece or, or vacate the one property, not all three. Like, I don't know in the future if you're going to own all three pieces or if somebody else will come on and own one some other day and might not care. Anyway.
Uh, you're correct in the fact that the Park Avenue, their major source of drainage for past three-three-zero-zero to the south and approximately up to, I think almost midway on three, three-four-eight, all focuses on that, uh, uh, wetland area as their major source of drainage. So their ODOT is, I, I don't know what they have to say about it here, but we just went through the process with ODOT on what they're going to do on highway corners up here and all the transaction that goes on there. And they say that they have the right. they say that they have the right to use that wetlands. So nothing can be done there because of their presentation to us.
Meaning it's already unused.
It's already used. As a delineation, um it it's it's self-explanatory where it is.
That's really interesting, the statement you just said about ODOT saying that they're, they use that wetlands area to drain their highway.
They do.
Okay, and yet right up at Buzz Camp Town. They they've washed their hands of that. They don't want any responsibility for that.
Well, we are in a discussion on what they're gonna do about this wetland right at the present time.
Yeah. But ODOT's speaking out of both sides of the mouth. Okay. I have something I'd say. I I agree with Terry on on the valuation, what that property should be worth.
You got an option? You want to tell us what it is?
I don't know. I mean, this, that makes an offer.
Well, I think what we have is something written on the books that tells us how we go about finding the value of something.
Well, how about we strike that part and and sit down for a negotiation as to what the property is really worth.
And then that would mean we're gonna put this off until another time then.
You don't have to, you don't have to. You have the right not to, to elect not to charge that money.
Yes, that's right. Except for we have it written, right? Garrett, Garrett, you you read it in our zoning ordinance. Uh, Chad, maybe you've got something to say about this.
Sure, Mayor, again, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So in your existing code, um, there's a requirement that says the compensation to be paid by the applicant to the city shall be determined by ascertaining the most recent county assesses valuation of the land to which the vacated property is to be joined, determining the assessed value of each square foot of such property, then multiplying that amount by one half, fifty percent. So what the code says is like, here's a process to determine the amount. The code is somewhat ambiguous about whether or not that amount is actually required to be paid or if the council has flexibility. Um, it's my understanding that the council may have negotiated in in previous street vacations and and that that Peter may have advised you all that because of this ambiguity, you have some flexibility to negotiate that. Um, you know, this this section, the rest of this section, which is twelve point zero three zero requires the city administrator to provide an estimate of the the cost statement as part of this process, which is what you see in your report. And so, you know, one could argue that that language that I just read to you was the process by which the city administrator has to come up with the valuation for that cost estimate and then says this is what shall be paid. Um, but you know, there's enough ambiguity there to the extent that you've already sort of interpreted this in a manner that gives you flexibility that you can continue to do so. I think if you look at this language from my legal reading of it, you you've got a situation where the code and and the previous council that enacted this provision was trying to set forth a pretty clear-cut standard about what that compensation level should be. But I do agree with Peter that, you know, there's enough ambiguity in the way it was written that if you all wanted to come up with a negotiation and and come up with a different amount, you probably could.
Okay, thank you, Chad.
All right.
And can I have? Just to say, you you can keep the, if if you want more information or a proposal from the applicant, you can um reopen the here, you can ask for that and reopen the hearing next time um, to continue discussing based on some more concrete information that they could provide. But you're also free to, of course, come up with something right now.
Do you, just said, do you need time to look at the property on the backside?
Me personally go there?
Personally go there.
It doesn't help because we've been, we've just gone through one of the driest seasons I've experienced in the ten years I've been here. So me walking out there is not gonna tell me anything.
Okay.
What I would like is a wetland delineation.
Yeah.
Certain vegetation does does.
I don't have that kind of knowledge. I understand, I don't.
Okay, Dana?
Well, it's, it's interesting. I mean, he's a, he's a, he's a good businessman. He's, you know, sees a move to make his property worth more, to protect his his investment in his property. And he's used in an argument that is similar to the argument that we would like to make to PG&E for this property right next door. That that property should, you should give it to us for free or something close to that because it's not worth anything to anybody else except for us. So um, while I see the benefit to him, I don't, I also see that his argument is is reasonable. I just would like to say, I would like to see something where this came out as a wash and we came, came up with enough money from the sale of this property in order to help us with the the purchase of the property next door. So I would like, he's a businessman and I respect that, but we also cannot just give away um, public property without making sure that we're we're protecting ourselves.
Did we not just do a partial street vacation when we had that fence in the right of way over on Chief Street?
Hager.
Yeah, the, yeah, Hager and G block up from the mayor's house.
Yeah.
By where their fence and the front of their lawn was in the right of way and that right of way was not necessary. There we figure out why that your piece was there. And there was an adjustment made to that price as well. I don't know what that is.
I'm just wondering why we couldn't vacate only half of this? Like fifteen feet instead of the whole thirty feet. That still provides the city any access it would need. Um.
I'm not sure. We'd have to check with uh Attorney Jacobs uh with that. The way that the code's written is is that the property will be offered half and half to, you know, half of that property will be offered to person to the west, half will be offered to the person in the east. Uh, I'm not sure what adjustments we could make through that description. Logistically, I don't think, you gotta go across that creek in order to get, for Palmberg to be able to get. Yeah, the creek, uh, the beginning of the creek is mostly of Palmberg property and not within this right of way. That doesn't happen until you get to the property at three, three, four, eight beach, which is one south of three, three, five, zero on the corner. Then uh, the water comes across there.
Okay, so how far does this right of way go? This isn't an accurate picture of the right of way, right, that is being vacated?
This goes all the way to the Hawkins property, which is about, well, I can measure it for you. I think it's a little bit older than that. Um.
So we're looking at less than half of the vacation property?
Yeah, the right of way is about thirteen hundred feet to the south.
Right, but he's asking for four hundred feet. This is not a full picture of the four hundred feet, or is it? Because.
Yeah.
Because he's asking for the three beach properties, which he owns. Kumar is not the property.
Right.
It's right here.
Right to there. Right, but it's, how come Hanson's in the uh equation as far as value? Just on the corner?
That Hanson is a joint owner with Palmberg.
Okay, thank you. I just see the one name.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. Does anyone want to amend the motion? Does someone wanna call for the vote?
I, I will amend the motion to include.
Do I have to withdraw my motion?
No, because we want to go with yours as well as what I'm gonna add. Okay, here we are. Uh, to 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 add an additional the six conditions of approval that have already been suggested as well as a no fill, no use, except use as a wetland left in its natural state with no tree cutting. In other words, trimming up is probably okay, but no cutting, three step. And uh, I would further amend it uh to request a wetland delineation. And that probably puts his investment in this up to around twenty thousand dollars. So I'm not if you would just say twenty-five thousand and leave it there.
I'm more on the line with Dana. I'd say we give him sixty forty. He pays us sixty percent of what it is.
I give it fifty percent of sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Well, is his portion sixty? No, thousand, his portion is less than that. Yeah.
Right, but it's everybody's.
Okay, so sixty percent of sixty thousand, which, somebody who's better than I am at math, that's
Thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand, which is less than what he was expecting.
I mean, you've, someone else make a suggestion because I just.
Well, we don't have a second on my.
No, we don't, because you're an addendum to the motion. And we need a second to the addendum.
I'll give you a second to the addendum.
Okay, so.
But we need to come up with a number to.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Um, I I would feel comfortable for in the forty to forty-five thousand dollar range.
Okay. Do you want to make the suggestion? Because we don't need a motion or all we need is consensus on the amount of money. So we can do that right now outside of the motions.
Is there anybody else who, who, what do you think, Preston?
I don't know. It's worth forty grand. Thirty max.
Well, what if we include what he says is already spent?
Can I ask one question? What is the you mentioned the fact that this property over here, what is the what is the value of, what what are they wanting for that?
They're doing the same thing that we, same discussion that we're having here. They're saying make us an offer. Um, uh, they don't know how much it's worth, but they know it's not zero. So um, they're not gonna give it to us for free and I, we have not as a as a council discussed exactly how much we're gonna give them. If I was a betting woman and this is not, I cannot talk, speak for the council, I think that a reasonable offer for that property would be forty, forty-five, maybe fifty thousand tops.
But it's not wetland, is it?
No, but it's a very small piece of property that isn't.
It's a very small piece of.
Yeah, it's a.
It is, it is kind of valuable because it enhances what you have. There is no value to this enhancing. It doesn't mean I'm gonna buy it anymore.
But that could be, but I'm kind of curious as to what ODOT was saying about doing something about that wetland when you said you were talking to them. They're gonna do something about that.
No, they want to continue to use it and they want to shake the drainage across my property to them. It is already there. But it's eroding and it's eroding on my land. So we have discussions about what to do to to more direct the water where it won't be eroded. But it is already, the wetland is already being used as a.
Right, okay. I just wondered if, well, ODOT's coming in and is going to redirect the water, so it's a nice pathway all the way down Palmberg's property and it opens up everything on the east side.
Are you willing to take an offer?
An offer for what? The property paying? I, I believe Dana said forty, forty-five, Preston goes thirty. I said sixty percent, which is thirty-six thousand, so.
Uh, okay. In the, in in the revaluation, this whole thing, how about if we stipulate that Mr. Longburg and the city administrator negotiate what the, what the city would be willing to take for that vacation?
Okay, then it'll be held over until next month? Everything stays the same? Motion stand as second? As soon as we get a second to the addendum?
She said.
Oh, and the, both addendums?
Okay, but who's on first and who's on second?
Your first.
We need to withdraw one of those in order, Chad, where are we?
You have one motion on the table and then there's a motion to amend that motion. So the process would be to first vote on the motion to amend the original motion. And then if that passes or fails, then you would vote on either the amended motion or the original motion, depending on what happens with the vote on the amended motion. So the first step is to vote on the motion to amend the original motion.
So to be clear, if we all vote no to the first vote, then we work on the second.
If you all vote no on the first vote, then the original motion, which was just to adopt the the ordinance as presented by staff, would be on the table.
Okay.
Okay, I think you're gonna need to clarify that again. I heard what from the, from the right.
So the original motion, the very first motion that was made that was on the table, was to adopt the ordinance as presented by staff. So with the six conditions in the staff report. Then there was a second motion that was made to amend that motion that would add some additional conditions related to the wetlands. Then you had a discussion about changing the value of the price as well as part of that motion. Um, and I believe there's one more condition that I didn't write down that you were gonna include as part of that amended motion. And so the 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 vote.
That was to allow Chad to negotiate.
Yeah, the vote before you now is whether to adopt that amended motion. Now, if you want to make it a little cleaner, I think what you could do is first withdraw the motion to amend and then sort of take those one by one. So first have a motion to amend the original motion to include a seventh condition related to keeping the wetlands in place. And then you could vote on that. If you all agree on that, great. Then you have a second motion to amend, which would then talk about the price. So that way you're very clear on exactly what you're doing, because I think the the conversation got a little convoluted as to what exactly the amendment was going to be.
So we need to withdraw the the amendment and then we need to go forward with another amendment?
Yeah, and I would suggest doing those one by one as opposed to adding multiple amendments at once.
Okay, I'm gonna gonna restate my original uh, motion to amend the original motion, and that is a seventh condition of approval. No fill, no use, except use as a wetland left in its natural state, no tree cutting.
But Chad, you were saying we need to withdraw this amendment.
Yes.
Right? We would withdraw it, we'd vote on the first motion, then we add from that point?
No, no, so the 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 first motion was just to adopt the staff report and the ordinance says, which include the staff report. So now you have a motion to amend that motion. And so what I would do is withdraw that motion to amend the motion and then do exactly what was just proposed is do it one by one as far as any amendments you want to make. Does that make sense?
I'll withdraw my motion to amend.
Perfect. And now you can make a second motion to amend.
Now I'd like to make a motion to amend the original to include the number. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to vote on that or can I just?
You have to do a second. Somebody asked a second.
Oh, second, my withdrawal.
Okay, I'll second your withdrawal.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the original motion to add a seventh condition, no fill, no use, except use as a wetland left in its natural state, no tree cutting.
May I add to that?
No, Pauline is gonna add a wetlands delineation.
Okay, and require a DSL. require a DSL certified wetland delineation to establish wetland boundary and wet conditions.
Okay, now I second that.
So now somebody needs to make a motion about the pitch.
Now, so now you'd want to vote on that motion to amend.
Okay.
We have a little discussion with everyone. I prefer to check on the law on the wetlands. Under the wetland. Many, um, I believe there is provisions to be able to take down a tree that is dead, diseased, or dangerous. And with your motion, you said no tree cutting. Um, so I think we can rectify that other than, otherwise we may get into a situation where dead, diseased, and dangerous would not be able to be removed.
In a wetland? Dead, diseased, and dangerous to who?
Yeah.
To structures people. He's got a tree that's coming over towards his structure out of that wetland. You would not be able to cut that tree by emotion.
Has a disease that's going to spread.
Which we can get out of.
Yeah, we, we're telling you can't cut, this is only, we're only talking thirty, thirty feet across. So easily something could approach that could, that could be a danger.
Cutting and removal of trees that was a hazard to life or property.
If it's already in our wetlands, Chad, do we have to deline, uh, do we have to clarify the fact that if it's diseased or a danger that that is an exception to the rule of no tree cutting?
Can we just say only cutting in, um, yeah, subject went to our, our wetland?
Wetland like over there zone.
Yeah, I, I, I think you, as long as you're expressing what the intent is, and if that's the intent in defining what tree cutting is, then that's fine to just to say tree cutting as, as long as then we then memorialize what that means. And so, you know, if you're telling us that, you know, tree cutting means, you know, as subject to our code, which would allow for tree cutting for these sort of like emergency situations. And I believe there is also discussion previously about, you know, trimming trees was okay. It's not just the removal of the trees. Now, we can memorialize that through the minutes to make sure that as we move forward in the future, that we understand what that motion means.
So that is still, but you're, you're just asking to follow the rules as far as wetland?
Well.
Or are you trying to?
I would prefer to not have.
Higher restriction.
I would prefer to not have trees cut, but I, I'm, I'm willing to amend my amendment to say no tree cutting except as allowed by.
Section three point one three.
Three point one three.
We have a second on that amended motion. All those in favor of the amended motion? Say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? I didn't hear. Sorry. All right, now moving on to the motion that Councilor Gould made, that was second.
The, the number?
No, not the number, the.
You have your number, the original. Okay, so the original?
Right, and all we're going to do afterward is by consensus is instruct the city administrator to come up with a number with Terry that is within the read.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So the, the findings that are in the conditions of approval currently say that the city shall be paid the estimated compensation or the compensation specified by the city council in this decision. So if you want to, you know, delegate that authority to the city administrator or if you want to, you know, have that number brought back to you for approval, you should actually make a, a motion to amend that condition of approval, which is condition of approval number four to do whatever it is that you want to do.
Yes, if I make a motion that we amend the condition of approval for number four.
Compensation.
Compensation to delegate the authority to the city a, the city administrator to negotiate a price and come back to us in October.
For our okay. I second that. Is that, okay, now may we vote?
Of course.
All right, I just. All those in favor?
Okay, I just. One little point of discussion, I still don't understand now for delegating it to Chad, how Chad can, can know how does Chad make a decision on the value of what Terry is gaining without knowing the wetland delineation? Is it, is it based as Chad Jacobs is saying of how, what the state assesses the value? Would you just go by that? Or the county or whatever, or do we need to know how much is going to be buildable land before we make that decision?
Why don't I have an increase? I'll pay for the increase.
But how can they increase it if you don't have a wetland delineation?
The wetland is already defined by the state and the federal government. You, the city has nothing to say about where the wetlands ends or stops.
But the wetland definition by the state that we have now is just an approximation, it's not a definitive. So this could be way off, is what I'm saying. So if we get a wetlands delineation, then we know exactly how much will be buildable land. Do you see my, see the difference? This is a, this is a guess.
Well, there isn't any, I mean, I've been involved a little bit of land deals around how much to move it. And there is no buildable land here, even if you move that line back because of setbacks.
Well, you're gaining on the setbacks.
I'm gaining on this. I'm, yes, there's, uh, how do I say this?
What is that, thirty foot by the way?
It's thirty foot by the way.
And he's getting fifteen, you're getting fifteen feet, is that correct?
Well, the bottom line is I'm also getting the other part through negotiations with the other party, so. Yes.
Okay, but that's, that's a deal that you're making independent of our decision.
There's, there's, uh, there's no buildable way the way the wetland sits down to build anything on it, even with the accumulation of the right, right way.
And I'm saying we don't know that. I agree with you're, you're saying, you know, what you can build using the wetland, we don't know where the wetlands are.
Well, we do because the, it is defined by the wetlands.
It's approximate.
Yeah, this is the, this is.
It's a guess.
There's no fill on number seven. You can't build without fill on that ground.
We don't know.
It's not buildable because he can't get any fill in it.
I understand that, Terry, but what if the wetlands only comes out to here? He gains, what if the wetlands is really only about here and this is all buildable land? That's worth something.
Well, I've been hearing all my life and I can tell you that that land is not buildable and the wetlands is pretty much where it is, is shown.
There's an accurate, this is, I don't know where this map came from, but the, the, uh, I can't think of who, whose memory, sorry. There's an accurate shot of the overhead of the wetlands that a county has of exactly where the wetlands is. This is approximate for this picture. The wetlands has been defined by the, uh, by the federal government, they made the wetlands.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any wetland delineation that's been done on this property that we could find online. There is this overlay zone that was done with the intended purpose to make the overlay zone a little bit larger than what the actual wetland is. So through a process of delineations, we can refine this law, if you will, and give a better understanding of what the buildable lands may be. Um, although with what you were saying and that center building, if there is a septic behind it, that's not buildable. I think that the sixty thousand dollars that was assigned to this project was done through our ordinance condition evaluation on it being all buildable. So somewhere between sixty thousand dollars and zero is what that property is worth, right? Um, how do we get down to further determining what that value is with or without a delineation? I would have to come up with some sort of process and bring that to you after doing, uh, some site visits. Potentially, I think that the wetland is very definable through that area because there has been ass fill way before Terry and it's actually quite, uh, steep. Two and a half.
I'm willing to have it, I won't argue that. I'll pay for the raise. If, 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 if you.
Leave it as it is and then Terry and I come to an agreement and we tell you what our process was and how we came about that, then you can choose at that point whether or not to move forward with that. And if you decide not to, then you can ask for the delineation and then Terry can decide whether or not he wants to move forward.
We have already asked for delineation on one of our criteria.
Is the delineation strictly to establish the wetlands from the high and dry?
I believe that's what a delineation is.
Well, there's lots of different forms of delineation, that's why I'm asking. Delineation is, is, uh, for instance, if I wanted to fill this, it would be delineated on Fifth Avenue, I delineated a little puddle in the middle of that property. So what I did was I either buy a piece of ground and trade it out as a delineation or you pay.
The version of the delineation that we would probably need would just be a boundary line.
A boundary line description.
A boundary line of the wetland, and I'm not sure exactly what that's called, but, um.
The wetlands delineation, and it just gives you the boundary of the wetland. So, you know, extremely dry summer, it may have changed and it may be much larger next year, but I think if we can get that, Sharon, you would be a happier woman, counselor, I mean.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I think the vegetation is going to tell you.
Yes, it does.
It does.
It does.
That's how they do that.
Exactly.
Yeah, the only time that I'm qualified to tell you where a wetland is is it's a ditch. Uh, I can, I can go from there and look at the floor and bond, but after that, I wouldn't qualify for that there.
You mean, does your shoe get wet?
Sometimes.
Okay, that's a.
Sometimes. Gone too far.
Mayor, could I maybe make a suggestion?
Yes, please make this.
Garrett made the suggestion earlier tonight, but what I would, what I would suggest is that you don't actually vote on this ordinance tonight. That you basically continue the hearing, allow Chad to negotiate with the property owner, come back to you at the next meeting with a proposal and then you can bear it more very clearly decide what you want to do, um, in, in order to actually have one thing done. Because I think the process that you're going through right now is going to create a bit of confusion as far as, you know, what is required and what is not required. Just by way of example, the, the wetland delineation that you required as a condition of approval. When you were making that motion, I understood that to mean that the delineation was going to demonstrate the area of wetland that, you know, had to remain, you know, that couldn't, where you couldn't cut trees, you couldn't do things, and that was the purpose of the wetland delineation. It sounds like you also want a wetland delineation or potentially a wetland delineation for the purpose of creating the value of the property. But that wouldn't come about as part of this condition of approval because that would happen after this was all said and done. So it's a very long way of saying that I think there's a lot of information that you still need to have to make a final determination here. And I think the easiest way to do that is just to keep the hearing open, bring it back next month once Chad's had an opportunity to negotiate with the property owner and provide a more sort of detailed analysis for you to consider.
All right, well, Chad, the only issue I have with what you said, and I appreciate you saying what you did, is I've closed the hearing. This is an ordinance, we're not doing a hearing, we're just in discussion on a second of a motion. And can I just reopen the hearing next month?
The council can vote tonight to reopen the hearing.
I made the motion that we reopen the, the hearing, um, and carry it forward to October when we can have some of the conditions that we've discussed tonight met and Chad can do can negotiate our price.
Okay, can I get a second? All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're holding the hearing open and continuing it until next month. All right, moving on and business.
Oh, I, I'm just wondering, we did have a motion on the floor. Yeah, I, and now that I think about it, I, I, can I withdraw that motion? Is it too late now to do that?
You voted on one.
Right, but I, then I made the motion that basically we allow Chad to renegotiate, come back to us in October. So should we vote on that one and then?
So I think the council by consensus can basically say that, you know, the other motions have all been withdrawn because the council as a body voted unanimously to continue the hearing. I don't, I don't, I don't think you should be bogged down by the rules of procedure to sort of work the will of the, the, what the council wants to do here.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Okay, so everyone willing to forego everything we were talking about until next month on this, um, screen vacation, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. Ordinance resolutions, ordinance nine five one and ordinance amending sections of ordinance nine three zero, known as the contractor workout ordinance. Chad, the synopsis.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gould provided counsel of amendment, uh, amendment suggestions via like correspondence July same council meeting. Discussion is also held during the July work session. Councilor Cocker requests a redlined version of the current ordinance with suggestion that is attached along with ordinance nine five one, which officially involves the changes. After review, the council advises that the ordinance is overly broad and may, and may unintentionally regulate activities not actively restricted. Council recommends that the city take more time to complete a comprehensive rewrite to better target the intended activities. The council wishes to proceed now to minor clarifications of draft amendments, have that suggest. Uh, you have your options once by time only, make changes to the motion or take other actions, uh, by council.
I can resolve this really quickly by making a motion to, um, take council's suggestion and work a little bit more on this and bring it back in October.
Second.
All those, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, last time when we discussed this, I, I asked to have, um, Chief Gregory's input on the enforcement factors involved in the proposed changes. Do we want to do that now or you want to do it next time?
Next time.
We, we, we should probably have a working ordinance with the changes that you desire with these recommendations and then, yes, Judge Gregory will be a large part working with us on that.
The enforcement input. Okay, so we've got motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor say aye. All right. Moving on, ordinance resolutions, resol- resolution ten ten. LOC two thousand twenty-five annual voting delegate, chat.
The Lee Warren City Senate Correspondents Regarding the Election of the Twenty Twenty-Six L O C Board of Directors. Candidate bios are available on the LOC website. Tonight is the opportunity council to discuss and recommend an LOC Board of Director candidate for twenty twenty-six. Only one verbal vote for city is eligible. Council must also resolve to appoint an official delegate and alternate to cast your heart's vote at the LOC business meeting in October. Different from last year's past, the LOC recommends delegates be appointed via resolution. We have a regulation attached. And I'm not sure that we're ready or the council is ready to, uh, give a specific uh, vote towards a board of director or if they are actually appointing our own delegate to make that choice for us.
Since none of us know, I think we could be appointing a director. and make that decision. I, I read about this on the.
Hey Chad? Oh, hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, guys, I just wanted to I just wanted to, um, remind everyone of what you did last time. I think this is an every-two-year thing, maybe? And the last time that this was done, everyone sent their preferred candidate via email to the appointed delegate prior to the meeting. And that was how it was handled, since it's a vote, it can't be done publicly.
Ms. Christine.
That's what I was gonna say. I thought that I read that on the on the website. I had trouble finding the, the delegates. I could not find it. On the LOC.
Yeah, it is really difficult for some reason, LOC, no.
So I have no idea who the candidates are.
Yeah, it's because the applications are still out there. They're still accepting applications.
And how can we vote on who, what candidate we want?
We can't, but.
Now, this is just to vote on somebody who's gonna vote at the LOC meeting.
Right. And an alternate.
I, I will not be attending this year, so it cannot be meeting. Yes, it has, yeah. Sorry. I'll make a motion that the mayor.
I'm going, so I, I will be there. You're going, aren't you?
I am. I will second that for, I, so I if you withdraw your motion, I'll make, I'll make a motion. Me or her? Well, I'll make a motion for a first and a second voter. You, you made a motion, correct?
I'm getting tired.
I need to, yeah. Just withdrawing.
I made a motion, uh, for the mayor. I withdraw it.
Okay, so I will make a motion that the mayor be our primary and, um, our, and that line be our second secondary should something, should the mayor be able to make the vote.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on. If you can believe it. Preston, you got any concerns? Dana, do you have any concerns?
No.
Paulina, do you have any concerns?
No.
Sharon, do you have any?
No.
All right. I'll take a motion.
Do it to her. But I said.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You mean, it's adjourned? Oh, yeah. That was tough.